The time now is eight oh three and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were trustee Nyberg, trustee Zizaro by phone call, trustee Hart, trustee Cassos, trustee Moreland, trustee McLaurin, John Walters, town manager, Marie Kim, the human resource director, and Michael Goldman, the town attorney. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of the matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I will ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is the action agenda, the IDEA Day proclamation that was tabled on eleven eighteen twenty-five. We had a proclamation that came up and we tabled it till today and it's, I guess it's up to the board if anyone would like to make a motion. So, we don't have a motion, so I guess we'll close that action agenda item and that will be closed. Next will be the Bayfield liquor retail liquor license renewal.
Yeah, so I bothered chief on his vacation to check with that one to make sure it was okay and came back with no negative input.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the Bayfield liquor retail license renewal.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any public discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
You gotta wait a second before you.
There we go.
Before you speak.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next is resolution number six five five H U T F.
So, that's a common resolution you guys see every year that sets the H U T F taxes based on your road mileage and you have the fiscal breakdown on that as well as the road mileage and there was no changes from last year.
I read through that whole thing and all those com stuff. That makes absolutely no sense to me. Can you explain it, somebody explain it to me a little bit more what that is and how it relates to us? Is that money we receive, money that gets spent? Where does it show up on the budget? Where does it correspond to the budget? I don't understand that.
My understanding, Mr. Mayor, trustee McLaurin, is that the state has a grant program that is based on highway usage and it's prorated to the different communities based upon the number of mileage, mileage of streets that you have that are qualified under this. And so, when you have to increase, when you increase your inventory or you decrease the linear feet of roads that you have, that then changes the formula and how it's prorated to you. So, larger towns get a little bit more money than poorer towns. And it, we do get that. That is one of the revenues that's listed under the revenue sheet and it is a state money that we get. The municipal league provides basic information, but the calculations are based upon the C. dot street inventory. So, every year we have to go through at the same time and certify that either we have a change, in this case, we don't have a change. If we do have a change, we have to put on there what we've added to it and certify that that has been added to the rolls. I believe this has been done for several years. I'm not sure how many years. It's at least a decade that I could see in the records.
It's been done every year since Bayfield existed and was a statutory municipality. So, that chart that you're seeing in the back, trustee McLaurin, those are all road segments. And if you see that they're graded on there, and so, the state has taken and broken all of our paved streets into different segments. So, you'll see some of them will repeat, some of them include intersections, some of them include that. And then, they're rated good, fair, or poor. So, every year we certify that and if we do a large reconstruction project or an overlay of two inches or more, we can upgrade that street to a good street. If we don't, if it's just a surface treatment like a chip seal or a crack sealer or something, then those don't count against that grade. So, those grades are calculated and I don't know the formula off the top of my head, but that's how they determine those amount of state dollars that we get for our streets and maintenance through the state of Colorado.
Well, there's some really big numbers in here as far as dollars go and I'm just, I don't see how that, where does that come in? Two million, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, three hundred and twenty-three?
You have a list of other municipalities in there as well, yeah. And of course, you know, the big cities, you have a lot of streets.
Okay, so just Bayfield, so we get somehow fifty-four thousand? And how much money do we get for that? Is it on the list somewhere in the?
It's under Bayfield. So, these are alphabetized on this list.
Oh, okay, all right. I see, I see. Getting there?
I do have one question for you, Jeremy. Have we added any roads with the new construction and stuff? Would any of that be counted?
With the new subdivisions that have been built, we do not own any of those public streets yet. The town hasn't accepted them. That's why there is no change in regards to the H U T F. So, for Pine River Commons and Mustang Crossing, those roads are paved, but until we accept them, we can't count them towards our inventory.
Gotcha. I had a feeling those break somewhere. Thank you.
So, in our budget, there's going to be fifty-four thousand dollars, fifty-four thousand, ninety-four dollars somewhere as money that we got for our paved roads?
There will be. It's in the Cassell budget every year. We don't get that determined to us until after we have submitted it. So, if, and I'll go through and find exactly where it is on here, but yes, it will be included in the budget. That is going to be a quantifiable amount that we will receive from the state.
I believe I saw it under revenue.
It's a revenue in the street fund, usually anywhere between seven thousand dollars a month. I mean, we receive it on a monthly basis from the state. It's an automatic deposit and it's about seven thousand.
A month, so fifty-four thousand for the year.
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't looked at the paperwork this year to tell you what it's going to be next year, but it is a revenue in the street fund.
Yeah, page E. one is where you'll see that.
Yeah, it's easier to see on this thing.
All right. I just wanted, I didn't know, that was great to me, so I wanted to know about it.
Okay.
Is there any other questions, concerns, or comments? Does the public have any input? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolutions number six fifty-five H U T P T F.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Budget work session attendance for November eighteenth.
I think that says exactly what it's supposed to be. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget work session attendance dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is revisit the July first agenda item number four E. Trustee requests discussion whether to pursue proceedings of removal of a trustee under CRS thirty-one dash four dash three oh seven. This was, a motion was made at our last meeting and was shut down by, was put on hold by the temporary town attorney at the time. And I thought it would be prudent to put it back on the agenda because the attorney, or the trustees, more than one trustee had a request to rediscuss that item.
So, I don't recall that we denied anything. We set a date and we said we were going to talk about.
The facilitator.
The procedures and what you guys wanted as far as a hearing officer.
Yes, yeah.
Well, we did the, I made a motion to drop the entire situation and that's what Mayor Ah just stated, that attorney's office said that I couldn't make that motion, that it wasn't appropriate and stuff like that. That's what he's talking about was denied.
Oh, okay. That wasn't clear to me at all. Okay.
Yeah, if I understand it correctly, trustee McLaurin made a motion that was not agendized and that was the reason that the town attorney stated probably inappropriate. And so, appropriately, it looks like the mayor has asked that we put this back on the agenda to revisit a decision that this board had made July first, twenty twenty-five. And so, that's what's on, apparently on the agenda for today.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we do not proceed with the removal of trustee under CSR thirty-one dash four dash three oh seven.
I second it.
I want a discussion.
Yeah, there needs to be a discussion.
Hang on, hang on. I got a motion and a second.
No, there needs to be a discussion, Mr. Mayor.
I know.
He's saying discussion.
Just give me a minute.
It's a discussion.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? One at a time, please.
Yes, so I just.
Trustee McLaurin.
First of all, I've heard several comments from trustee Moreland over here, it's like people changing their minds. Back when we first were discussing this case with trustee Hartz and decided whether we were going to continue to investigate it or if we were going to set up a hearing, I did agree to that at the time because I thought I wanted to see a fair and hopefully quick resolution to this problem instead of it going on and on and on. I have since that time, I mean, I did, I voted to approve it. If I hadn't, it wouldn't have. But I have thought about it, examined the problem and I, yes, I've changed my mind. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's ridiculous to keep continuing this, beating this dead horse as far as taking up the board's time and resources.
So, am I allowed to speak now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. To address a change of heart when it was a thought to be fair and now you've gone to change your mind, that would state that it's no longer a fair thing to do. And I want to just say from my personal opinion, a couple of things. One, when I think about what a diversion program is, I liken it to if you were to get a speeding ticket and you're offered to go to a class to have the speeding ticket taken off of your records, it's the same kind of a thing that is offered, the diversion program. Doesn't mean that you weren't speeding, doesn't mean that you were. You didn't say I was, you didn't say I'm guilty of it, you didn't say I'm innocent. You said, I'm going to take the class because I don't want that on my record. And I feel that that diversion program is the same thing. That's my one point. Another point that I would like to say is that I believe that it is very fair to hear both sides of the story. As I said before, when we initially did this, that it'd be fair to trustee Hartz as well as to Ms. Lucy Stewart, for them both to be heard. They were not heard, it was done through a diversion program. So, it didn't get the result that the public could hear what actually happened. And I think to be fair, to do our due diligence and to not be, have your personal biases in there, it's fair to have both parties come up and kind of talk about what's going on, provide their evidence. And then, the board gets to make the decision on it. I removed myself from that by doing the charging piece of it so that I didn't have a say in it, so that it would be fair and equitable to both parties. And I just feel like by not doing it, we are not doing our duty, our ethical duty to our citizens.
And the only reason I bring this up is through even our attorney that let it go through the court process. It went through the court process, like you said. It was a diversion, we don't know, but I feel like it's already been gone through and why do we have to further it? That's just my opinion.
Mayor, trustee Zizaro is.
Trustee Zizaro.
Thank you. So, the reason why I voted yes for this in July was because I have never heard trustee Hartz's side of the story. I've only heard from Ms. Stewart. So, I wanted to provide trustee Hartz the opportunity to share what exactly happened because what I know is that a trustee went to a resident's home unannounced, uninvited, and a resident called nine one one based on an interaction. That's all I know. And so, I wanted to know more and I wanted the public to know more because it's the public who has been coming to me as the representative, asking what happened. So, and I can't answer that question. So, maybe there's members of the board who know more than the story. I personally do not and so, that's why I thought a hearing would be the fair, maybe not to be a removal of a trustee, but just to hear both sides of the story because I don't know the last time anyone in this room, not this room where I am, but in the board room, that's been to someone's house and had an interaction which ended up with police being called. And I don't understand that. So, that's what I wanted a better understanding of. And I've never received a phone call from anyone on board, anyone, anyone about what exactly happened. And so, if there were anyone else on board to do the same thing and the police report with me or the police were called, I'm just kind of curious. Many people come to my house, I've never had to call nine one one. So, that's just what I'm confused about and I wanted to provide trustee Hartz that opportunity so that everyone in the public could actually hear her side of the story. And so, if this was not the appropriate way to do that, I apologize for voting yes, but I still don't know the way to get both sides of the story. And I'm not saying it's a criminal act. I'm saying, is it appropriate for a board member to show up at someone's house uninvited, unannounced, and then that resident calling the police? Like, to me, there's more to the story that I just don't know and I really wanted to hear trustee Hartz's side of the story and I thought this hearing was the way to do that. So, that's where I stand on this and I just wanted to share that so that if this doesn't move forward, I'm just hoping that we would get to the truth of the matter and perhaps there's members of the board who know both sides. I'm just not one of those members and I know there's members of the public who don't know that and that's who we all represent. So, that's what I have to say.
Trustee Katzos.
We are here to serve the public. We have a serious complaint that a citizen was approached in a bad manner by one of the trustees. It is our responsibility to listen to the public. It is our responsibility to give the public a chance to be heard, to be understood, and in that hearing, trustee Hartz has an opportunity to share her side of the story. This has been a request by someone in the public. We don't serve each other, we serve the public. It disappoints me that we voted and everybody on this board said, yes, let's do the right thing, let's hold a hearing.
The majority.
The majority. So, with that in mind, to renig on that is a further, in my opinion, assault on the public by this board. We owe this citizen the right to bring forth her complaint. The trustee has a right to defend herself and then we as a board need to weigh what has been presented and make the right decision based on what is presented. That is my opinion. I'm extremely disappointed in members of this board, you know, wanting to now change. So, what are you telling the public when you say that? What are you saying to the public when you say, no, we're not going to hear you? I have a big problem with that.
Yeah. I am still awaiting answers to a number of questions I raised in my November fifth letter. Those questions are based on procedural safeguards set forth in the Ethics and Best Practice Handbook. The handbook makes it clear that seeking to remove an official should be exercised only with those procedural safeguards in place. Therefore, those safeguards cannot be ignored. If the board is going to proceed to a hearing without fully answering my questions about procedures, it will not be complying with Ethics and Best Practices Handbook. Trustee Moreland said at the last meeting that she is following all the instructions she was given by the board's attorney. I don't know what discussions she had with the board's attorney, but if the instructions given to trustee Moreland by the board's attorney deviated at all from the instructions he gave to the entire board at the July first, twenty twenty-five meeting, it demonstrates that the procedures are being modified to facilitate the prosecution of the charges, thus unfairly depriving me of certainty of the procedures that will apply in this matter. Trustee Moreland kept saying at the last meeting that she wants a fair process, but what has transpired so far has been inconsistent with that statement. If the intention is truly to have a fair process, then this board should scrupulously follow the instructions given by the board's attorney at the July first meeting and should scrupulously follow the guidelines set forth in the Ethics and Best Practice Handbook. Anything short of that lacks fairness. The Ethics and Best Practice Handbook makes clear that the bar for exercising removal is high and should be exercised only with the procedural safeguards in the handbook in place. Given the high bar for exercising removal power and all the necessary procedural safeguards, the board should consider whether it makes sense to pursue this matter when the prosecuting attorneys, authorities, excuse me, the prosecuting authorities who are charged with investigating and enforcing the laws decided not to pursue the matter to a conclusion and instead allowed it to be dismissed. It was dismissed.
Since my name was mentioned multiple times, I would like to state one other thing. We're using the Book of Ethics, right? So, where was the ethics in going to somebody's home and creating them to call a nine one one call? I am sorry, which ethic is more important?
That is a judicial question that has been.
Hold it, hold it. One at a time.
I'm not asking you a question. I'm allowed to make my statement.
If you want to continue, that's fine, but I want every single one of these procedures followed.
Then you need to follow them too.
No, I mean, yes. No, 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 no. Yes, I do, but that has nothing to do with what has, I mean.
It has everything to do with what has transpired. I would not even have, be having this conversation if you had not gone to.
That's fine. What?
Exactly.
Okay, so let's.
Nobody else is going, so nobody else is having those conversations.
I want to, I have one more, one more piece, one more piece. One more piece. I probably should have read the whole thing. I'm not talking about, so I'm saying no because, you know, we haven't followed these procedures. We don't have any of them in place. There's going to be expense, there's going to be time. You don't even have a, you are required, required to provide a, the hearings must be held under the same limitations, precautions, and sanctions as in any other judicial proceeding. This means that under the rule one oh six A. four of the Colorado Rules of Civil Procedure, a transcript of the proceedings as well as the evidentiary record will be produced to the district court for review. The standard of review will be whether the governing body's decision was arbitrary or capricious. Constitutional due process violations may be raised and considerations of bias may be raised to set aside a decision as well. You are asking, the way you're, the way you're expressing it is all of you want to know what happened. That's different than removing an officer or a trustee from the board. That's a completely different situation. If you want to remove me, these are the rules you need to follow. These are the procedures required. But you're not talking about, when you talk about it, you just want everybody to hear everybody's story.
No, we want a hearing and the reason that we have a hearing is to set those procedures into place. Everything that you read will come as we set the hearing up and the transcripts will be taken during the hearing. So, you're just running interference after interference. You should be willing to do this if you remember that this all started with over fifty residents coming to this board with a request of a letter of resignation.
No.
People recognize, people recognize that you did not perform well in their stead. One thing led to another. No one, no one led you to go to any public person's home. You made that decision on your own. We don't know all the details, but we want to know the details and we want to give Ms. Stewart an opportunity to be heard, to explain what happened. You'll have an opportunity to defend yourself. The board will make a decision based on what is presented.
The alleged charges handed to me are constitutionally objectionable because they are based in part on a citation being issued. As I stated in more detail in my November fifth, twenty twenty-five letter, basing charges on the more mere issuance of a citation which does not determine guilt violates the constitutional protection that presumes innocent until guilt is proven.
The procedures are being followed. You were presented with a subpoena about why you're being called a charge.
I was not presented with a subpoena. On July first, I guess I would, I should have just read it from the beginning. I want to start with what our attorney said at the July first meeting. At that time, he said the charges, after having been written up, should be brought before the board for consideration. That has not happened. He said if the.
If I could just interrupt at this point, it would be inappropriate to present to the board, which is the quasi-judicial decision makers who are going to essentially make a decision if a hearing is held, if a hearing were to be held. It would be inappropriate for them to. to first review and screen charges and then become the decision-maker.
Then why did you say that?
If I'd said it, it was out of turn procedurally, it just doesn't make sense.
I have it on the record that you said it.
No, I'm not saying I didn't say it. I'm just saying that it doesn't make sense from a procedural and a due process standpoint, Trustee Hearts. So with all due respect to you and appreciate the position that you're in, it just doesn't make sense for the board that will ultimately be the decision-makers to review and screen a charge. So, the way it has worked has been to follow due process procedures, and there are only two cases that even address this over the last 120 years. So, we have been doing our best to follow the procedures addressed in two previous cases. One, a state court case and a federal district court case that involved removal of a trustee. Very rare, as Trustee Hearts said, and process and procedure is of utmost importance. So, if I misstated something on July 1st, it's okay for us to follow, you know, readjust the procedure to make sure that things are fair. So again, just to comment on that, I just want to make sure that those that are in the quasi-judicial process and would ultimately hear this, if you decide to hear this and continue here, it would be inappropriate for you to screen the same charge that you're going to make a decision on later. So, very proper for a prosecutor or the charging decision person to draft those charges and to have those served upon you without the involvement of the, basically, the jury, ultimately, who will hear the evidence and then apply the evidence to those charges. But again, inappropriate to have, to screen the charges in advance. And I'm very, I'm very sorry to disrupt you, but I just had to clarify that, that point. Again, not stating that I made, I made a statement on July 1st doesn't carry the precedent of law, and so in reviewing all of this and applying those cases, this is the procedure that was set out, again, looking for complete fairness if a hearing is to be held.
And is that, is that the same for the hearing officer too?
So, as far as the hearing officer, if this board still wants to go through with a hearing and wants to have some different hearing officer, that's perfectly okay. But the board has not weighed in to say, you know, we, we have received word that there's, the chair of the Board of County Commissioners is willing to volunteer their time to be the hearing officer. If that was okay with you, that's fine. If it's not okay with you, perfectly okay for the board to say, you know what, let's find a different hearing officer, that's okay.
That's our last discussion.
That's exactly what I said.
That was our discussion last meeting.
And then when will the identity of all the witnesses, all the other procedural items need to be addressed?
So, your questions are all well invalid. We've attempted to answer them, have answered them in red after each one of your questions.
You have answered some of them. You have not answered a majority of them.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to get oppositional with you, Trustee Hearts, because your, your points are all valid. It's all about fairness, and we're doing our best, everyone's doing their best. If you were to hold a hearing, if this board decided to hold a hearing, do our best to follow the law and make sure that the process was fair, and that's what all, that's what we're trying to do.
It's based on a citation.
Okay, so there are, the, the charges have been brought, independent person brought those charges, they're not going to be a voting member, just as you're not going to vote if there were to be a hearing. There would be a vote done amongst the quasi-judicial body, that's the five remaining board members, if there were to be a hearing. If there is no hearing, then this is all for naught.
All right. You know, you keep going on about fairness. You want fairness for you, but there needs to be fairness for our public. That should be our priority. That should be the number one thing that we put above ourselves, because we were voted, you weren't, you were appointed, but the rest of us were voted. The public put their trust in us and said, I believe in you to make the very best decisions for me as a member of your town. My, my concern is how we're managing that trust of the public, how we're showing our concern for the public and what the public requests from us. In every issue, whether it's flooding of their property or, or someone being harassed on their own property, that's what we're here for, to look after our citizens and to meet them when they come to us and request this from us. So, when you talk about fairness, Trustee Hearts, what about fairness for the public? That's the priority.
I want this to be a fair hearing if we're going to go through-
We have said we want it to be fair.
For everybody, for the public. It's right here, for the public, for the town, so they don't get sued.
Any other, any other discussion from the board?
I guess what I would put in there is the fairness like Trustee Katsos is saying, and making sure that the processes are followed. I did have an issue with Matt Sulka when his name came up, and we kind of addressed that.
Change, I'm like, I don't have any issue with if you want to change something like that. It doesn't, that's fine.
So that's, that's what I mean by fairness as well. So, but, and I don't want any other county commissioner. I want somebody like that, you know, is by, is by, you know, that is very neutral. And so that would be, when we go for the fairness, that's what I would look for.
I'm okay with that. All they do is facilitate the hearing, that's all they do. They don't get to vote.
There's a few things more than they facilitate.
They can, they can-
They can allow evidence and-
They can decide evidence.
But, I mean, I think that's beside the point. I think the point is that I don't, I know I personally don't have a problem with adjusting that. That was not an issue to me. It's not an issue. I want it to be there. I want you to walk away feeling like you got fairness, just as much as I want it for Ms. Stewart.
Anyone else? Is there any public input?
Public input. My name's David Black. I've been listening to this crap for a year now, or not, or close to a year. Oh, Trustee Hearts, do us all a favor and resign, please. I mean, good land, you're embarrassing, you're embarrassing all of your colleagues for certain because they're now discussing this for good land, the, how many times have y'all discussed this? But it's ridiculous, and you are the one that caused all of this. You're the one that caused all of this, and you talk about fairness. Well, I'll tell you what, it's not fair for me as a, as a constituent to have somebody like you making decisions to hire that man or anybody else, because you clearly are out of your realm. You're out of your realm. You need to resign. Resign. Please resign.
Kristen Dowdison, 1162 North Peter Drive. I have the same protections in place for me as the deputy town clerk, and Mr. Ah, you didn't take in public comment in this section, only in this section of the action agenda, and only on this specific item, is unruly. This is so unbelievable, guys. Get a grip.
Mary Benson. I listened to the last meeting and could not be here. I do want to say a few things. One is that it takes a ton of courage to be in a small town like this and to try to do the right thing and to bring this, this, you know, hearing up as even a thing. It takes a lot for me to stand up here. I do not think this is personal at all, Trustee McLaren. I think that it has drawn on way too long, and I think the more that people dig in and object, and, you know, it can drag on another six months. I read through 300 and some, you know, comments on all of the park things. I looked at all of the comments that came in when we were trying to get the sales tax passed, and there's a common theme happening in this town, and it's a lack of transparency that they're feeling. They're not feeling like you all are communicating with them. There's a lack of accountability, there's a lack of, just, I don't, I don't really think that they have a lot of faith in you all to run the town. I think that it's your responsibility. If this happened to me personally, I would be upset, and I would want, you know, something, I would want people to know, and, and I think that our leaders need to be held to a higher standard. I think that it's, you know, you're responsible, it's like a parent over a child or a teacher or a principal, like, people are looking to you. They are, there's just a higher criteria for people in places of power, a pastor, all of these people who have influence. And so, I think this should proceed, and I think it should be fair, but I think that it would be wrong for you to not do this because you already have a confidence problem in your community. And just not being transparent with them and not being accountable just is going to ingrain that even more. I think it's important for it to happen.
Anyone else?
Mr. Ah, I just want this to be fair. Being done, the same person that drug it on at court is dragging it in here, and I'm sick and tired of it. I know, I'm not the only one. I've gotten phone calls, I've got letters of the community and how disappointed they are and why they voted the way they voted. I think you have the power to bring the confidence and help board, to help the people in the community come and trust you guys making these decisions. And all I'm asking is for fairness. I didn't seek for this to happen, it happened to me, and that's why I'm asking all of you to be fair about this and have this hearing, and get it done, and quit prolonging it. I can't be here, I got to go here. Let's get it done and be done with it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Dustin, can you read back the motion, please?
Motion was to dismiss.
Got a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Cesaro?
No.
Trustee Hearts?
No. Yes, we can all-
You cannot vote against, against you, you cannot vote-
We voted the first time, and we all voted.
Does it make a difference?
No.
Let's make sure her vote is recorded. Trustee Moreland should have an opportunity to vote, and so the entire board should vote on this particular matter.
The motion is to dismiss, I vote no.
Oh, I'm, yes, I'm, I'm sorry. The motion is to dismiss, yes. Jesus. Sorry, I misunderstood, I'm sorry. I want it dismissed, clearly.
Trustee Katsos?
No.
Trustee Moreland?
No.
Trustee McLaren?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah?
Yes. Board of Trustees reports and request for future agenda items and committees. I don't have anything at this time. Trustee Hearts?
I don't have anything.
Trustee Katsos?
Is there a planning commission meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda, so I just was confused by that. I don't have anything else.
Trustee McLaren?
Me neither.
Trustee Moreland?
So on a positive note, the Pine River Shares and the Pine River Valley Rotary Club had a wonderful Thanksgiving dinner. We were able to feed everybody that came, they were able to take leftovers, we had plenty of food. Last year we didn't, so it was really awesome to see that kind of a, of a positive thing in our community and to be a part of that. So just wanted you guys to know that. As far as the Economic Development Alliance, they meet tomorrow, so I don't have anything from them, but I would like to address what's going on with the flooding that happened for Ms. Stewart, as well as a new person that came up, I think her name was Marjorie? Mar, was it? What?
Mandy? Maddie?
Maggie.
Maggie.
So, I would, I would like for there to be a resolution put together for them on what we are going to do to fix their problem. And where, like, put a plan together that we're going to have it done. This is what it potentially could cost. We need to start working on that and seeing it here at this board regularly so that we can let them know we are addressing their issues. That also goes for the floodings.
I sure agree with that.
And that's all I have.
How many, how many have you served, do you know?
I don't. I don't think she took account.
Yeah.
I don't think we had time to take account, to be honest with you.
Trustee Nyberg? And Trustee Cesaro?
The Thanksgiving lunch at the Senior Center was also a success. I think that was around the same time as the Pine River Shares Thanksgiving lunch. So, I think all the way around in Bayfield, we did a really good job taking care of our people and celebrating the holidays. But I did attend the upper pine board meeting. Lots of talk still about their Station One, and lots of talk about their budget and the direction things are going, and everything seems to be going in a really favorable direction for the fire department, especially with the passing of their 1% sales tax. So, things are going really well there. And Justin provided me with the resolution information to share with the Bayfield Chamber of Commerce, and so that has also, that's also in progress, and that's all I have.
So the upcoming dates of interest, there's planning commission tomorrow and the 9th. Board of Trustees meeting is now on the 10th and the 16th. The town offices were closed for Christmas on the 24th and 25th, and for New Year's, it will be closed on the 30th-